Good morning, Frederick County. This is Dana B. with a little bit of an ear infection, so bear with me if I get a little off topic. But this is Dana and Charlie. We are Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries 3%. And here in Frederick County, we try to do things that bring information here to our own community, not just nationally, but especially locally. And today, we have the distinct pleasure of meeting with Doty Stottermeyer, who I've known for quite a few years. I have a T-shirt from her back in the old Tea Party days about 15 years ago that people laugh at me with still, that I still wear. But she's been a friend of ours for a long time. And Charlie and I wanted to talk to her about her ideas and her run for the Shawnee School Board here in Frederick County. So first off, I want to say, Doty, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for being here.
I never did get to ask you how the infection's going, so I'm glad you're maybe on the mend.
We're getting there. I can hear half, which is pretty cool, you know? So maybe I'll talk half.
Somehow, I'm not thinking that correlates.
No, that's unlikely.
Maybe I'll talk that. But I appreciate you and Charlie, yeah.
I do a lot of, it's just kind of the input and side things on what I see. We follow a lot about what's going on nationally, worldwide, and so forth. And Charlie pretty much leads the podcast as our lead correspondent, Charlie Markert, from the Planning Commission and the co-chair of Mountain Patriots Educational Ministries. So Charlie, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to you this morning. And it's good to see you here, my friend.
Good to be here. Thank you.
Yeah, man.
And thank you also, Doty, for being here. We like to share ideas and information. We like to get into the meat of things. But before we do that, we also like to learn a little bit more about you, about your background, where you come from, what makes you tick. Who is Doty Stottermeyer?
Wow, now that's a
Casserole lady from last night.
The casserole lady from yesterday, for sure. Tomato pie, don't ever forget. Use up your extra tomatoes. I'm actually from Asheville, North Carolina, born and raised there. I came from a family where I had four older brothers, baby of the family. And I always loved horses from the time I was a small child. I wanted to be a jockey, but my physical demeanor, I grew to be 5'10", so that's not conducive to being a jockey.
Right.
However, whenever I was in my, went to college, you know, high school, college, local college, I was in my third year, and I found out about a vocational horse school in Lexington, Kentucky, which tweaked my interest. So that's where I went. It was like a six-months vocational training, morning times, you did anatomy, bookwork, or in the afternoon, you did hands-on with horses or vice versa, depending on what you were doing. Because they boarded like 30 horses for clients.
Sure.
And we were the labor for the clients, I guess. But
Convenient.
But I learned so much. Our final, our final was a project where we had to put together a working farm. And that was it. I mean, that was your, it was the, like, it's almost like when you go for a business proposal. It was a business proposal, really. And that was it. From there, I went on to work in the horse industry for 17 years, 16, 17 years. That's how I made my living. That's what brought me to Virginia. I worked mostly on thoroughbred brood bear farms, doing, you know, doing work with the horses, believe it or not. And it was not really, there were not a lot of women in that industry.
Right.
So somehow, I decided that in my late 30s, I should go into retail. It'd be a lot easier. And that's how I wound up going to Walmart for about nine and a half years. And then I ended my working career in retail, at least, with a 17-year stint at Martin's in Stevens City. So that's kind of my background.
So you've got business and retail, all put in, running a business, learning how things work, working with the public, working with the horses, a little too big for a jockey unless you had a bigger horse.
Yeah.
That would have been my problem.
Hard to run speed races like that.
I would have needed a big horse.
Not unless you have, not unless you have draft races, draft horse races, but
That's pretty neat. That is really cool.
Oh, you know, I've been so blessed in my life because I was able to make a living with my dream, you know, doing something I loved. How many people can say that?
Not many.
You know?
Not many people can say that they got a chance to do what they wanted to do.
Yeah.
You know? When I was growing up, I didn't know what I wanted to do.
I didn't either. I just knew I loved the horses. But you know, I loved, I loved it. It was, it was hard work. It was manual labor. It was, you know, horses don't care what day it is. You don't really get vacations.
Right.
They just don't. But it was, I really loved it. I really loved the animals, and they're still under my skin. Every chance I can go and smell a horse or play with a horse, I try to, so.
Well, you can always take me with you.
I will.
So what motivated you to get into the school board business, speaking of businesses, another part of the world that you're stepping into?
Another part of my life. Probably professionally, we did all that. Now, civically, I started paying attention to many things that were going on in the country, probably in the 2007, 08 era. And then met my husband, Mike. We got married. I think, actually, the day after we got married, we were down in DC protesting the healthcare bill.
The ACA bill?
Yes.
I've got 25 years in that. I can tell you.
I didn't like it when it was Hillary Care. And I sure didn't like it when it was the Affordable Care Act, so.
Horrible. There's nothing affordable about it.
There's nothing good about it, period.
That's my whole background, ACA.
So we, we went down with several groups that were, there was one group in Hagerstown that was taking buses down there. And they had started to Tea Party there. They, I kept saying, man, I wish we had something like this a little closer. And they were like, why don't you start a group? And I thought, nah, we would never done anything like that before. And they said, they said, well, the guy that ran it, marvelous guy, who's still inactive, and he said, we'll help you. And that's what they did. They came down and helped us with our first meeting was in the Stevens City Martin's Coffee Shop. We had nine people there.
So things started.
Yeah, a little guy I worked with, there was, there was a nonprofit paper that was put out every week back then. And he put an article in the paper because he was their journalist, and so he needed something to write about. And then we decided we'd have another meeting, rented the Public Safety Building. And then there were 80 people that turned up that night. Phenomenal. And that's exactly how we got started with that group. The IRS, of course, you know, was targeting groups. So we became the Apple Valley Club, a book club to get our EIN number so that we could get the bank account. And we operated. And so that is how I became involved in the local government scene, and, you know, state, really, trying to elect good candidates for office.
So as far as the big national issues, the truth of the matter is, it starts locally.
They don't affect you near as well as the locals do.
And it starts with the children. Because whatever they're taught or indoctrinated with, manifests itself later. And so your concern for the children and the school system, how do you see the school board operating now? How well are they operating? What are your thoughts on what they've accomplished or not accomplished?
So I ran for the school board in 2017.
Did you? Okay.
I did. I ran for the Shawnee seat. I was running against an incumbent named Jay Foreman, which I got 44% of the vote. I didn't think that was awful, but I did lose. And I can tell you right now, that back then, when they had their committee meetings, like the Building and Grounds Committee or all that, any of the standing committees they had.
Right.
They operated on a 15-minute meeting. Then usually, they did it right before the school board meeting itself. So they would like, you know, they came in, they passed everything that was put before them. They didn't ask questions. And it lasted a total of 15 minutes. Thank goodness.
You're talking, what year is this, Doty?
2017.
That's what I thought. So this is in 2017. We're right coming out of the Obama era, okay, of, you know, which is what got you into, you know, I mean, that's kind of what did it for me. Well, actually, 9/11 started it for me, then the ACA.
Yes, yeah.
March 23rd of 2010, I'll never forget being in Madison, Wisconsin, when they passed that bill. And then seeing what was going on with that.
The Patriot Act.
Yeah, the Patriot Act, everything else. And it starts to stack. And you finally scratch your head and go, you know what? If I don't do something.
I can't wait on anybody else to, I'm the reason it got this way. I wasn't paying attention.
I wasn't paying attention. And some of us right now are going to be so broke, we won't be able to pay that.
That's true. Yeah, I agree.
So what do you feel needs to be done? What has to happen?
For the future?
For the school board, for the school system in the future.
In the system. That's a, that's a
That's a loaded question.
That's, I mean, that'll take us how many hours? I don't know if we've got enough time for that.
We're working on it.
I feel like they, and I'm very appreciative of the time that they spend asking questions, because like I said, there was never questions asked back then.
Right.
I appreciate going in. And that's, I got a heart for details and researching stuff on my own. And there's a lot that's missed when you don't personally show up to things, which is why I've tried for probably since last May or even April, I've been trying to go to the school board meetings, not just the school board meetings, but all their committee meetings as well.
Wow. No small task.
No, it's not.
It takes, it takes time. But it's time well spent, I think.
I agree.
And so that's where you get to know the details of the things that are, that are happening. And sometimes they're asking, I appreciate the fact that the school board is now asking questions. They ask the staff questions. And, and the other night, when I was speaking with your group, I said, sometimes I don't ever really hear the answers. So I assume that they get them in some form that's not public. And Scott Asturaman said that, yeah, they do get the answers. They, usually, it's in an email. So, you know, I would like to know the answers myself. The staff has been very welcoming as far as me asking them questions. Sometimes there's just not enough time for everything to be able to get to.
Yeah. And as a citizen, you just have a scant few minutes to speak your piece.
Yes, absolutely. So there's, there's, I think that they are doing a good job in asking the questions. Sometimes I would like to see, and maybe they know more than I do. I would like to see more questions being answered in front of the public.
A little more transparency.
I'm not saying they're not trying to be transparent. I'm just saying that
Right.
They, they may not feel that that's something that's necessary, as long as they're getting the answers, and they're the ones that make the decisions, you know, then. And I appreciate it. They are representing their constituents, so it's
So they're, they're doing some good, so you want more of it.
That's right.
Yeah.
So they're more awake now than they were in 2017. So you're seeing a shift now where people are starting to get more involved. We got younger people, like Christian Marcia Luskey, you know, kids 30-years-old, wow, you know, great kid. Marina Caruso, young lady. I mean, they're going, you're going, wait a minute.
I do not know her very well yet. I'm like, you know, I don't know very much about her, but you know, she's done, she does ask questions, and she's not afraid of, to me, the only stupid question is the one you don't ask.
The one you don't ask.
Right, right.
That's my opinion on that, so.
So, so what are your thoughts on the, on the whole system, on the schools, the children, the teachers, the support system, any or all of those that you might have some thoughts about you want to share?
I think that staff has gotten used to, long-term staff that's in the central administration building has gotten used to not having to, and it's interesting, that's another reason to go to, to the meetings, is you see interplay a little better in person than you do on the YouTube videos. And so I think sometimes they, like any public servant, you get entrenched into that belief that, that your cause is the best. And sometimes you don't, you don't see all the other perspectives that you may need to take into consideration when you're, when you're speaking of programs you want to institute and dollars that need to be spent. So sometimes you have to have a wider angle of opportunity to look at all the different sides of things. So that kind of
It's a human nature to want to continue what you're doing.
It is, and absolutely.
It's hard to change.
It is.
We get complacent. You know, we get complacent, and we get, for background, we get used to it, you know? You get used to it in this, and I hear this now, you know, from people that, especially that voted in the last election. All of a sudden, they stop, they go, well, you know, I've got the representative now, they'll fix it, you know? It's, it doesn't, it doesn't work that way.
No, we all need to, we all need to hold each other and everybody else accountable. We are supposed to be as involved as we can.
Yes.
Speaking of being involved, how might we get the parents more involved?
Because we have ideas, too.
Ah, yeah. Well, I love that. But you know, parents, parents, they love seeing their children succeed. And they love seeing their children be involved in any kind of a program or in any, anything that goes along with that. And, and, you know, I see more parents at the, at the award ceremonies. They don't necessarily stay for the rest of the meeting. Some do, some don't. Most I will tell you, vacate as soon as, as soon as the awards are over with. But there are some that stay. I'm glad to see. There are.
Everybody has a life to live, and you have to respect that.
But that's part of life, Charlie.
Yeah.
I mean, you had kids.
Take full advantage of, of parents who are willing to step up and say it.
I'm glad to see that they have, for years, I've been trying to get even into the Frederick County Public Schools 101 program, where they, you know, they have a series of meetings over a series of weeks where they educate you on how the school works and all that stuff.
Oh, for adults, right.
Adults, for interested citizens in the county.
Yeah.
So for years, and it seemed like this, and maybe it was not. But I would apply for stuff, and I would never get accepted into the program, or, you know. So they are now opening up Citizen Advisory Committees.
Perfect.
Which honestly, people need to apply for those. There is a lack of people even doing that. And there's, there are probably six or eight committees. And they appointed me to the technological advisory, Citizen Advisory Committee, which I was like, hmm. But honestly, it's been good for me because I've learned an awful lot about the Chromebooks, I've learned about
Right.
Technology, things that have been going on in the schools. And I'm grateful to do that. But that is an avenue where parents can get involved, or any citizen. And I'm grateful for this group of administrators and for the school board, because they're the ones that ultimately appoint citizens to the group, to the committee.
So that
They are up to not a select few of people who, who may share the views, you know, because sometimes, sometimes we tend to appoint the people that we know are going to be in our corner.
Right.
And so I'm glad to see that that's opening up to other individuals. That's
You brought up something, you know, and Charlie hit on it, too. How do you get people to do it? I was taught that you want to attract people to something. If you keep promoting something, you know what? You should do this. You should, 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 and you should all over yourself. Okay? So what, and we'll talk about this a little bit, too. What is the way that, and this is with any committee, and I, now that we've been doing this, it's like you've got all, the people look at it as volunteers. And I had somebody, when we originally started Mountain Patriots, say, well, I'm not having anybody make any money off of my volunteerism. And I'm thinking, well, we're not making any money off of your volunteerism. This has to do with everybody else. But what can we do that attracts people into wanting to do things rather than feeling that they're being pushed or coerced? Because when somebody isn't attracted to something, they do it because they kind of feel like they have to.
Right.
As opposed to, you know what? I want to see this happen. My parents were very involved. I was very, I was very involved with my kids. Barbara was very involved with hers. I know Charlie's, Charlie was. He's still, he's still the grandfather for the dog, you know? I mean, the dog comes to visit at Charlie's house. Everybody goes to Charlie. He's one of the greatest parents, grandparents I've ever seen. But how do we, when you start talking about committees, and this isn't anything, Doty, it could be Board of Supervisors type stuff, it could be any of that stuff. But when, our big focus is the children. And we'll talk a little bit more about this. But what do you see are some of the attraction points that would get more people and more parents wanting to be involved in what's going on and not, and staying for the school board meeting rather than just seeing their kid get an award?
True, that's a toughie, because I'm not exactly
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I'll tell you.
What makes it fun?
Well, what makes anything fun is when you see the, the result of the effort you put into.
We haven't been taught, this is how I said I've been taught that.
No, I know. You know, any, any, everything operates for a return on their investment.
Right. Not just a trophy.
Not just a trophy for nothing. I think we need to strive for excellence. We have to have excellence.
Merit-based.
Yeah, merit-based stuff. But honestly, for, for the general public, it is the fact that people only show up when they have something that they are
One of the, one of the returns on that investment, as you put it, is to see smiles on the faces of the children.
That's right.
And the staff, and the parents. And smiles go a long way in the reward category.
You know, there's a lot more to be said for an atta boy than there is for a monetary, don't get me wrong. Depending on the situation, if you're in a job, job situation, an atta boy and a little bit of monetary compensation could well be appropriate. But for volunteers, you know, you always like to have some sort of an incentive, and atta, atta boys are good. Food is always a draw.
Just some appreciation.
Some appreciation is, is, it goes more, it goes so much further than, than anything else. It really does. You know, everybody wants to feel like they're needed and appreciated.
And one of the things that comes to mind, you mentioned all these committees, these volunteer committees. If they were front and center, visible continually, or as appropriate, to the community, they'd be seen more often, appreciated more by others who aren't doing anything. That, getting that front and center in the community might, might go a long way to not only getting more people involved, but getting them to be involved longer and committing more. I'm like you, I don't really know what the answer is.
I don't, yeah.
But let's try.
There's all kinds of options to try, exactly. You know, but I mean, making, making events, you know, the schools themselves can operate and put events together to bring the parents together a little more. I'm going to be honest with you. I don't have time to notice what schools have and what events, because that's, you have to go to all these different school websites to figure out what each school was doing individually. But they are, I see more of an engagement with the community and the parents these days than I have seen in the past.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, it is a good sign. It's something that needs to continue.
So Charlie, this is perfect timing for, for what we're doing, that we should talk to Doty about. I talked to her a little bit about it yesterday. And trying to get people excited about what's going on and involve not only the, the children, but the parents, the teachers, and the school system, all built around our 250th anniversary. Do you want to, do you want to hit on that a little bit? We'll talk a little bit about that and see what feedback we get from Doty, because I think, I think she liked this yesterday as well. It's a big deal.
Sure. One of the things that we noticed at the last Wake Up Winchester Number Eight that we just did a couple of months ago, I did a little lecture on as George Washington.
Dressed as George Washington.
Dressed as.
I love it.
Oh, it's great.
And of those things, those major events that led up to the revolution.
Seven things.
And it was well-received, particularly by Larry Johnson, who is a liberty man, lives down in Front Royal. And he said, I teach children history by dressing in period gear and showing them everything and, and how life was back then. He said, if you had a 20-minute video of what you did geared towards the children, that would be a big help when I go into a homeschool situation, private school, public school. He's been invited in a few public schools and share all of this stuff. History comes to life with his storytelling. So what we're going to do is we'll, we'll develop a series of videos with various famous people in history.
Start with George.
Yeah, and bring in some details that aren't normally in a history book, where it says dates and places and the name of the event and, and sort of like a curriculum vitae.
The Anglican Prayer Book. How were you brought up, George Washington?
Which is really, history is really boring unless the teacher is inspired. So let's give the teacher some more tools that they can use. So we're going to go into things like the Anglican Prayer Book, like interviewing Benjamin Franklin, interviewing
Thomas Paine.
Thomas Paine.
Ulysses Grant, Teddy Roosevelt.
Yeah, yeah.
Marian Tubman.
But for over the next, over the next year, we're going to focus on the Revolution and how America came about and was built. And to include things like the, the Civil War and others that we come together on and interview somebody, and a variety of people that are willing to maybe dress in period gear.
Including the children.
Including having some of the children who want to
Have a child as Abraham Lincoln.
I love it.
Yeah.
And the parents will be so involved with that, too. You know, I really think they will.
Yeah, I think we can get the schools going. And I think if we can do something like that, it'll attract more people back at, like sports do. You know, we always had Friday night sports, you know? There was always Friday night football.
That's right.
When, when, when I was growing up in Baltimore, I mean, Friday night, we'd see football, lacrosse.
Why not have a program every so often at the schools, you know, for a combination Mountain Patriots, FCPS, you know? That's a lot of work, though.
It is.
Wow, that's good. That's awesome. Have you thought about, there used to be a gentleman who did the Mullenberg, Pastor Mullenberg, and I used to have, yeah, do you have, have you got his name?
No, I don't. No, I don't, but we would love to have it.
I've gotta search my bank and make sure that he's still, you know, active and doing that.
We want a lot of, we had Miles Adkins say, I'll do Ulysses Grant for you. People like that saying, man, I would go out and I'd rent the car and I would do the research and I thought, wow, that's pretty cool because. He's on the school board.
Yeah, and so how many parents do you think you could, who may have, have a character that they have, someone that they, maybe somebody's. Really been focused on John Adams, you know, or John Quincy Adams. I was an history major also. Sam Adams for the beer. I don't know. I think he's famous for something besides the beer. The beer, I guess is, uh, I think. I think the beer is more of a recent phenomena, uh, but yeah. But I think that, I think that, uh, you know, that, those are fabulous ideas, to be honest with you. Not to be able to know, that's what dictates our future, really. We have to be able to learn from our past to be able to, to forge ahead with the future, be honest with you. That's, that's in your life as well.
You know, I, I was listening to President Trump who put something out the other day and he was talking about the Smithsonian Institute. And all of our museums, which he wants to clean up, and I didn't think about it because, you know, I don't want to go to DC. Who, I mean, who does? Okay, but that's changing. And he says, you know, you go in there and it's all about how we creamed the slaves and how we screwed up this and how we messed up that. And how bad America is.
Celebrate Americans' exceptions.
There's no celebration of what we've accomplished, what we've done, what we can do, how we did it. How prayer works, uh, uh, whether you're black, white, yellow, green, orange. Makes no difference. What were your contributions to the greatness of this country? And I was thinking. That's probably why I haven't been to the Smithsonian in a long time, because that kind of the, the vibe you get.
I was very disappointed when I went to um to Jefferson's home, you know, to Yorktown. And I went there during, I, I can't remember what year. Probably like twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen or something. Yeah, a- and I was very disappointed because as a, I, I studied history. I mean, I, I'm a, I love history. I, I, I really, I've, I've read, I prefer to have historical novels or autobiographies. Uh, in my reading than, than, than novels. Don't get me wrong. I've, I, you know, I've done novels too, but. I, if you put the autobiography section and the fiction section next to each other, I'm guaranteeing you, I'm going over here first. Cause.
You, you can be an advisor to our series.
I'm not gonna swear that I'm that, but I do, I mean, you know, I've read an awful lot about John Adams and. And our founding fathers and, and there's a lot of stuff that people are not aware of. You know, thoughtful bait is never a bad thing.
That kind of helps fix the school system, because you know, one of the things, you know, that, uh, I, I mean. When I was, when we were going to school, there's a lot of things that, that, you know, we got bullied, of course. I think sometimes it made you a little bit stronger. As long as, you know, the teacher kind of interacted with stuff. But uh, one of the questions that we want to ask you is it, how is it possible? And this is a tough topic to keep a lot of the sexual perversion, some of the pornography, the racism and stuff like that out of the schools. And I think that's part of the reason that Charlie and I were talking about this liberty man, historical stuff. Uh, you know, to eliminate some of the, the perversion, the pornography and get people back to being. I hate to say it this way, normal people. I, I don't pick on anybody for whatever, however they want to be. Go be whoever you want to be.
That's right.
But uh, what are your thoughts uh, as far as the school system is concerned now?
So, um. As far as it's concerned now, I think that, um, well, we'll have to see how, how much they're doing away of the D E A. Stuff goes. That. The things from the Department of Education and from the administration prior that have been pushed down through the bureaucracy system. This is just incredible. So I think that if we focus on operating with a common sense attitude. You know, a- and. Biological empirical evidence from thousands of years. Empirical evidence. I'm not talking about theories.
Right.
There's evidence.
They're the ones that follow the science.
Well, you know, science, if you find an expert, uh, you can pay him to tell you whatever you want. However. Guarantee you, if you're in an accident and you have to be taken to the hospital, they want to know, are you a male or a female? Because their bodies are structured differently and how they can treat you is directly related to that.
Whether you like it or not.
That's right. So however you slice it and dice it. You can feel, you can have feelings, but empirical evidence states that you are one or the other. So that's kind of, and I don't think it's, there's anything wrong with telling. I don't feel like any kind of social issues need to be described, uh, or. I don't think anybody needs to, parents need to be the ones.
Parents need to be the ones.
To dictate a child's social consciousness, not the school system.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Like that.
Well, that's the way it's been, that's the way the whole thing was designed and you know about Cecil Rhodes and the colleges and everything else.
Oh gosh, yeah, you know, the whole, the, we're, they're trying, we're trying to take away parental rights, period.
Well, you're saying it in California right now.
In all over the country, all over the country.
Oh, that I'm well aware of.
You have to inoculate your, your school system against that.
That's right.
There's a lot we have to.
I am a strong and always have been believer in our God given constitutional rights. And let me just tell you, parental rights is at the very basis of it.
Absolutely.
Now, that, that leads me into a question about uh. Uh, discipline, uh, increased security. What we have to do to keep our children safe and to keep them doing the right things or not doing the wrong things. Uh, you have any?
Without mentally messing with them. That's a toughie. That's a thin line, isn't it?
Is a very different, and so are we talking about discipline actions at school?
Yeah.
Uh, because uh, honestly. A child's behavior starts at home to begin with. That's just how it is. Yes, so we're, we're back to the parental, the parental. Right, parental rights and involvement right there, uh, and, and.
And accountability.
Accountability, for sure. I, I'm a firm believer and always have been. This was one of the complaints from a lot of the people I talked to now and in twenty seventeen, whenever I was running. And talking to the people who I hope to have as constituents was the discipline in the schools. Now you have to allow and you have to give support from an administration point of view. To teachers to be able to have control in the classroom. You know, if you're gonna, if you are gonna trust them and hire them and put them in the position of authority in a classroom. You have to allow them to be able to control that classroom. But I'm, I'm not saying that it can't be done with love.
Right.
I agree.
Or, or with a kind hand. That's, that's totally different. However, when you have a problem and a problem child and a continuing, continuing um. Disruption in the classroom, then those, those things need to be dealt with. Quite frankly, they need to have a standard way of dealing with it. But it also needs to be treated on a case by case basis. That's a very difficult balancing act right there.
Yeah.
It is.
Because it's going so far to another side.
It has. We're, we're just allow anything.
Got to get the community, this, I, I see a lot of this.
Yeah, parents and parental involvement and people may like, they may not like me saying that. But, you know, there's only so much, it's, the schools are not a babysitting service.
No.
Uh, and they shouldn't be a babysitting service. I think many people think of them kind of like that. But they're, they're really not. Their, their job, the teacher's jobs is to try to, to train minds. Uh, you know, to, to investigate life, to be able to, to use this up here, this brain power. Intelligence, not the artificial intelligence, but the real intelligence up here. To be able to evaluate and weigh situations all through life. And, and that is their job.
We're talking basic STEM. You know, the, the, you know, science, technology.
Technology, uh, engineering and math.
Exactly right.
You know, and.
That's how we learned.
Others, history is, you know, all those, all those are interplay, you know, they're all connected. So. The discipline, but you can't teach that if you don't have discipline in the classroom. And quite frankly, I think the teachers would like to. To be able to do that. I think we are too focused sometimes on worrying about litigation.
I'm getting back to the fact that you are running um for elected office. Why should we vote for you?
Why should I, you vote for me?
What set you apart?
I think my lifetime of experience. Uh, you know, I, I, I know, I'm not shy about telling you my age, you know, I'm, I just turned sixty five.
We're right there. We're on that door.
You're a young lady.
But I do have a lifetime of experience and, and I have the benefit of being taught in school systems. Before the Department of Education came along.
Right.
And after the Department of Education came on. To have the.
The difference.
All three of us had that. That's exactly right. That's, that says a lot, Dodi.
That experience level right there is something that you can't, you, kids, that nobody in these generations successively. Can understand that and particularly since the advent of the technological age where the cell phones are right there. They, you know. People can't imagine a life without having cell phones. We operated for years.
And had more fun.
Problems without having Googled asked or being able to call somebody on the roadside if you had a flat tire.
Right.
You know, you had to figure it out on your own. I can remember I was going from Asheville, North Carolina to Charleston, South Carolina. And I had a, a friend of mine in the car, uh, my, one of my roommates from college. And I, my alternator went out on my vehicle. It was the middle of the night. We were on the highway. Thank God I had a flashlight in the car and Lauren was hanging out her window with the flashlight. I could make it to the exit, you know, and find someplace, you know, fifteen miles down the road. To be able to, to hole up until, you know, daybreak came and. I don't know that some kid, I don't know that some generations would be able to think like that, to be able to figure out a, a.
You survived that gigantic traumatic experience?
Oh my gosh, it wasn't traumatic. I thought it was funny.
We're getting underneath your car with a coat hanger at three o'clock in the morning, the side of the road because your muffler fell off. I mean.
Something like that, you know, you do what you gotta do to make it where you gotta go.
Dad, can you pick me up or send a tow truck?
No, we didn't have that. You could have walked about ten miles and might find a phone booth. You know, but you know, you had to think your way out of the situations in which you found yourself on your own.
But there's some people that can't think themselves out of a paper bag right now.
Problem solving needs to be taught at every level, every, every grade.
I, I, I'll share this with you. I was in, Barbara and I were in Ocean City last week. And you've got, uh, what are they called? I think they're called the J one kids that come over. I keep thinking J six, but, but they come over. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
These kids, the, 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 the people that are in Ocean City will hire. Any one of those kids that come in March and leave in November over anybody American ninety nine percent of the time.
They have a work ethic.
Add, subtract, multiply, divide, think, act, move, and, and, and you see this kid in an. I, I, I kept saying, where are you from? Romania? Where are you from? Bulgaria? Where are you from? Ukraine?
Yeah.
And I was like, and we see it all the time and we have just. And, and I'll tell you this much, and Dodi, you know this, this was not done by mistake.
No.
Where we are right now was done on purpose. It has been over the last fifty, sixty years to dumb us down to nothing so we would lose this country.
I can't remember exactly what year it was put in the congressional record, but the communist. Yes, and uh, so I mean, that, it was in the fifties. I can't remember exactly which year. But that's been, that's been coming for a long time.
Got it right here. Ann Kraft Katus is a very good friend of ours. She's a parent team six and uh. Virginia for Children's First. She's, she's unbelievable.
She is.
She is. She, I mean, I talked to Ann yesterday, you know, and we're, we're, we're putting together stuff. Again, uh, she's looking, she, I, I feel sorry for the people in, in uh Richmond. But we are also stuck with the fact that in Richmond, there is. Uh, it just in this state, there is a certain protocol that is being dictated by one side of the aisle. And that has got to change and, and until we change that and. A few other things, it's, it's a tough climb and Eric, our focus, as you know, Dodi, has been. Charlie and I, we, we started Mount Patriots Educational Ministries was to work in our county.
Community, yeah.
Our county, our community, what can we do and go out of our way? To make this happen, because if we don't do it, there isn't a tomorrow, but I can see it now. There is a nice light at the end of the tunnel. There's a lot happening.
There's a lot happening all over the country. I'm very glad to see it. I just am afraid that people will get complacent.
They did after the election.
Yes, and, and I'm sorry. Uh, you know, one man, one man cannot. It's not, I mean, he's facilitating it, he's facilitating the ability for people to, to actually. Uh, do what they're supposed to do and become participating members of this republic.
From the top down. We have to do it from the bottom up.
That's right. Never been meant to, to, to hold uh career positions. It was always supposed to be a citizen servant position.
Absolutely. Hey Charlie, can I do something real quick? I, I wanna, I, I know this is gonna, I want to share something while Dodi's here. Let me see if I can pull it up. Possibly and see, it's probably from my email, but I do want to share. Tell me if you can see it.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we are, and Dodi, I think we just are, are working on this last night, but we work with uh. Uh, First Landing, this is the email figures, I didn't do it right. First Landing sixteen oh seven project. Uh, most people think that we landed at Jamestown or the Mayflower up in Massachusetts. Where we, we actually founded this country was at Port Henry, at Cape Henry. Um, in sixteen oh seven before they went to, up to James River.
As a Christian country, as a Christian country.
And dedicated to God. So we are talking with these folks. Uh, and we're, we're connected very closely with Pastor Jack and Donica Hudson and Don Blake and all of those guys. Lieutenant Colonel Pete Chambers, the AGs, and First Landing Tour has joined America's two fifty tour. Okay, and A W O H is raising for the two hundred and fiftieth birthday. They're going all over the country. I just wanted to bring this up just real quick so people could see it. I'll send this out and make sure that it goes to everybody. But this covenant under God, this one nation under God, was signed by President Trump, the covenant to God. At, at Cape Henry was signed by President Trump on his hundredth day of office. Okay, and uh, I, reason I wanted to bring that up is because um. Let me unshare this. Okay, we wanted to bring it up because I think that. We're all, a lot of us are gonna have the opportunity next. April, if it all goes down, uh, to be able to hopefully see President Trump rededicate the United States back to God. At Cape, at, at Cape Henry. at Cape, at, at Cape Henry. So we're trying to get, you know, we want to make sure Frederick County works, but we're helping with other counties as well. And, uh, we want to make sure that that gets out there along with our little two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of all of our actors playing different parts, making sure the school board is taken care of. We're talking a little bit about farm to table. That's a little different. That's a little harder. Okay. It's a lot harder for us to do. But I wanted to bring that up real quick. Charlie, you want to add anything about Pastor Jack and Donnica and so forth?
Uh, they are inspiring people to, uh, uh, to be involved in this and, and, um, we will be now working with them to whatever extent we can. Um, and, and I think it's, uh, it's quite an opportunity. Um, but we're, we're about out of time, um, for this, uh, podcast. And we wanted to know, um, what your final thoughts are. Is there any last thing you want to leave with the, the people who are watching this program?
And how can we, how can people find you? Are you on Facebook? Do you have a website? Is there someplace? And how can they, and how can they help you, Dodie? If, if, if they want to get behind you, people want to get behind you. How do they get behind Dodie Stottermeyer, uh, for school board and Shawnee?
Wow, that's a good question. Um, so.
Bring a horse.
Yeah. Well, I don't have room in my backyard. It takes up too much room and it is pretty small. Um, I'll tell you, I have a heart for the kids. I have a heart to, to do the right thing. We, those, those kids, it just kills me for the lack of the things that they are learning about what they need to make it in life. There's a lot of things that need to, I'd love to see happen. I'd love to see the technology, the vocational, uh, programs expanded.
Yes.
That is very necessary. We don't know with the advent of AI, what the curriculum is going to be in the future that needs to happen or the job opportunities. But we do know that those, those jobs, uh, are, are never going to go away. Your plumbers, your electricians, your welders, your, your construction workers, fabricators, all of those industries, all of those skilled jobs, they're never going to go away. AI is not going to come and unplug your toilet. I'm sorry. A lot of things, but it's not going to do that. And I'll tell you, we, we need to expand those options. And those also come with the STEM, the STEM, the science, technology, engineering and math. Those programs are very important. I'm not saying that AI is not going to, uh, be a basis for many jobs. But I think cybersecurity is going to be one of the things of the future. It's like I said, it's very hard to predict what those industries at this point are going to be. But the one thing that you can do is you can instill in, in the kids, the educational, uh, excitement, the interest, you know, and the inquiry and the ability to, uh, to evaluate information on their own. So they can make informed choices. You know, you can't just listen to one thing or the other. You have to look at a variety of things in order to be able to make a balanced and informed judgment of something on your own. A lot of that comes with discernment as well. Right. And so those are the things that I would like to see promoted a little more. There's all kinds of partnerships between industry and the schools that could be, uh, further explored and expanded. Love to see all of that happen. I love the ideas you have about engaging, you know, the parents and the, and the kids. I even love farm to table. I know I met with Penny Curry. Last year we were talking about doing that.
She's on our list to talk to. Oh, yes.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
And that is one of the things that's close to her heart is to try to bring in more local, um, food sources to the cafeterias. So there's an awful lot of things I would like to be able to help promote. And I feel like I have the time and the heart for it. Pretty much a detailed person. I don't mind doing research.
That's obvious.
And, and I absolutely feel like that'll be a blessing and a help. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like I would love to have people vote for me. Uh, I feel like, you know, they, they are going to get a very good candidate, someone who's going to listen to their concerns as well. And be able to bring them to the administration to find out veracity of, of situations and everything else. If anybody wants to help, I just published a website. Uh, it's a little rough because I'm not a techno wizard.
Okay. What, what's the website?
It's D O D Y A V T P dot org.
D O D Y A C, what is it?
A V A, uh, V is in Victor. T is in Tim. P is in Paul. Dot org.
A D V K P?
Wrong.
I want to make sure, I want to make
Let me go to this, let me go with this again here. Uh, it's D is in dog, right? O, D is in dog, Y. Uh, A is an apple. T is in Tim. V is in Victor. P is in Paul. Dot org.
Fantastic. And do you have a Facebook page as well?
I do not. I got off of Facebook in twenty twenty one and I do not feel the need to get on there.
I got you.
I'm gonna tell you the truth. If I have to lose this election, I'm not getting on Facebook. I'm okay with that.
You sound like me. The only reason I got back on Dodie was to make sure that we got the Wake Up Winchester number eight out there again. And people could see it. Other than that, I, I'm about, we're, we're about to turn it off again too, in the Mountain Patriots. So I've got Dodie A T V P dot org.
Nope. A V T P.
A V T P.
Right.
No, P T.
No.
No.
I wonder if I just send it to you guys.
Yeah, that would be a good idea. And part of it, I, I apologize. I
I know you're hearing, honey. You got it.
I can't hear out of my left ear today.
And I'm probably not, you know, I'm, I'm a little rusty on the call signal stuff as far as, uh, correlating the, the alphabet to names, but, um,
We're gonna get this out there. This has been excellent. Is there anything else that you want people to know, Dodie, real quick? Before we, before, we always do a prayer. We have a Mountain Patriots prayer that we do. We do our mission statement in our meetings and we do our prayer at the end. But is there anything else that did you want people to know, uh, before Charlie does the prayer today?
Uh, just, uh, I hope that people have a heart for the kids. They think long and hard about who they're going to put into the place. And I'm really glad that there are so many people who are interested in running.
Yeah.
Competition's not a bad thing.
No.
And I just appreciate the fact that everybody else is in the race as well. And we'll just have to see what happens. I hope that, um, I hope that everybody takes into consideration many factors before they just vote. You need to vote on, on, on a knowledgeable basis for the candidates, really. And so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the time that you guys have spent with allowing me to be here. So thank you.
We appreciate. This has been a great conversation and we'll have other conversations, you and I, on other things other than school. Um, but thank you so much for being here. And Charlie, I'm going to turn it over to our, our, our senior vice president and, uh, co-chair of Mountain Patriots for our Mountain Patriot prayer before we close it up. How's that, Charlie?
Perfect. Uh, let us pray. Uh, dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful world and the country that you have given us and the patriots who are willing to care for it. Thank you for inspiring our founders to create this beautiful republic. Please help us keep it. To keep it as the aspiring place to live. Please give us the wisdom to do the right things, the common sense to judge wisely, the energy to never give up and your unending grace in which we take comfort. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Charlie, Dodie, thank you very much. Make sure, folks, that you like this, share it, subscribe, send it out to see, to, to everybody. And make sure you check out the rest of our videos at wakeupwinchester.com. Until the next I, Frederick, we'll see you on the flip side. Have a blessed day.
Thank you.